I would like to read this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Please let the record show that all members of the city council are present with the exception of Councilman Fairbanks. There's a copy of the Opens Meeting Act on the west wall in the framed picture and it's accessible to the public at any time during the course of this meeting. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item is item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on September 8th, 2015 as on file in the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of treasurer's report of claims. E1, approval of gauge area growth, Engage claim in the amount of $6,400. And E2, approval of balance of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $1,316,143 and 22 cents. Said that wrong. Item F, approval of Boswa report of claims in the amount of $26,837. Item G, approval of change order six, increase in the amount of $1,892.09 to Elkhorn West Construction, Inc., for the Beatrice Public Library renovation. Item H, refer claim of Beatrice Ford to the city attorney and city insurance carrier for review and disposition. Item I, approval of write-off of ambulance bad debts in the amount of $14,664.78. And item J, resolution number 5814, appointing Trevor Chadwick to the Citizens Advisory Review Committee. Is there any items that any member of the city council wants removed? Rich?
E1.
Item E1. Anyone else? Bob?
I'll abstain from E1.
And Bob will abstain from E1. Anyone else? Anyone from the audience?
Mayor, I move that all the items listed under the consent agenda, with the exception of item E1, be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
It's been moved by Catlin, seconded by Bilzbach. That the items listed under the consent agenda be approved with the exception of Your vote, please. And that is approved 8-0.
Seven, seven, six.
I beg your pardon, 7-0.
Mayor, I move for the approval of gauge area growth, Engage claim in the amount of $6,400. Be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Been moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr. That item E1 be approved. Mr. Partey.
That's me.
I beg your pardon. Mr. Kerr.
I just wanted to know what it is, though.
That is part of Project Rent. That is the project where the Engage is providing rent assistance to rare earth salt.
Any other questions? All right. And your vote, please. That is approved.
Six to one.
Six to one, with one abstention, and that's Mr. Morgan. Kerr's five-one, and Mr. Kerr is voting against. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the purpose of supplementing the fiscal year 2015 budget.
In the, as we stated in the packet, anytime our expenditures exceed what we had budgeted, we need to supplement the budget. For FY '15, there are a couple of areas where we need to supplement the budget. The first one is that the general fund expenditures were higher than budgeted. And page, let's see here, page 25, we lay out kind of the reasons why. Largely, they're due to the flood, the lightning strike, and the merger of the 911 with Crete. Those three items caused the general fund expenditures to be higher than we initially budgeted for. Each one of those has a corresponding revenue line, though, as well. The lightning strike, obviously, we have insurance proceeds from there. The flood damage will have income coming in from FEMA at some point. And the 911 merger, we talked about it before, has an increase in the inter-local government revenues there. So that's one of the reasons. The second reason is our health insurance. We combined the two health insurance funds that were out there before. BPW had a fund, City had a fund, and last fiscal year, we combined the two of them into one fund. That led to increase in expenditures in the general fund with a corresponding revenue line coming in from reimbursement from the BPW. Overall, health insurance expenditures have been lower than budgeted. But due to this merger, we need to supplement the budget for that. And the third reason is we had some outstanding TIF bonds on the Husqvarna Building and a couple of projects there. We had enough proceeds to pay off those bonds, so we did that here a couple of months ago. Again, we showed greater expenditures than we had budgeted for, but there was revenue already in the bank to pay for that expense. So those are the reasons why we need to supplement the budget.
Anyone from the council? Anyone from the public? Seeing none.
Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:08 PM.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Clayball. The public hearing be closed at, what did you say, 7:08?
Yes, sir.
7:08 PM. Your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0. Next item on the agenda is a resolution, is resolution number 5815, approving a loan from the LB840 fund to Dempsters LLC in the amount of $225,000.
Mayor, I move that resolution number 5815 be passed and adopted.
And moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan. Resolution number 5815 be passed and adopted. Your discussion.
In your package, I know we provided you with some of the information on this project. I see Ryan Mitchell's here. If you'd like to come up and talk about the project itself. Grant Jones is here. He can give the report from the CERC meeting, which was held earlier this evening. But in essence, it's a $225,000 loan with a one-year term, balloon payment at the end of that one-year term at 3% interest rates, what we currently have submitted to Mr. Mitchell. From there, Grant, you want to give the report from the CERC meeting?
Sure. Thank you. CERC met earlier this evening. Our current budget for LB840, after we get back, the loan payment made off by Dempsters LLC from their last application will be just a shade over $700,000. We have about $63,000 in CDBG money. The motion from CERC was in favor of application for Dempsters LLC for their $225,000 application.
Mr. Mitchell?
Mr. Mayor and council, thank you very much. I want to take this time and say thank you. You trusted us last time. I hope you can do it again. We had a six-month term last time. It's for the similar run of 30 spreaders. So with that, we are planning on increasing our employees and retaining what we've got as well. It's for another run of 30 spreaders is what we're going to be doing, and we're asking for a year because six months is a little tight with the timeline. So that allows us to do two full cycles is what our plan is. There's still lots of assets backing up, similar plan of personally guaranteeing it, matching with my own funds as well with full collateral. We've got a great partner in Pinnacle Bank as well, and so you'd be still secured in second position with that, with lots of assets as well behind it, as well personal guarantee myself.
Rich?
We'll hold the second position, correct?
You'd be in second position behind Pinnacle Bank. That's right, sir.
I got some things from you guys in a packet, two or three packets ago, that kind of bothered me, and I'd like to address them right now. From certified public accountants that you had do some reports for you. First of all, I couldn't make out too much on this, but there was a, and it came from August 13th, there was three of them. And each one of them, it says, "Management is elected to admit substantially all of the disclosures ordinarily included in financial statements prepared in accordance with the CAS basis of accounting. If the admitted disclosures were included in the financial statements, they might influence the user's conclusion about the company's assets, liabilities, equity, revenues, and expenses." What's that about? And it was on August 13th.
Yep, 2015. I have it in front of me.
And there was three other ones, or two other ones, I believe, in April and June that had the same language in it.
These are not audited statements, so they're internal.
I'm sorry.
They're not audited statements, so this is done locally with Schultz and Accounting with Kirby, Kirby Cunningham and Jennifer. So that, I believe, is the catch-all that they have there. I'm not a CPA either, but this is all documented and proven facts that are on there, so.
Well, you can see where this kind of bothers me.
Well, there's no requirement to do that. It's for their internal use only. It's not made for an outside party. He's just simply sharing it with you as a consideration of this loan, but it's not anything that's done for the limited and sole purpose of an audit, for someone to base a decision off of as far as the viability of the company.
A lot of this is boilerplate information. This is boilerplate stuff on a tax preparer's sheet.
Also, Councilor Kerr, this is what we provided to the IRS and the US government, and that's redundant with the tax filings to Gregory on that as well, too. So in doing that, that would be fraud if I was to provide false information. But this is not audited statements, so it's not, which is normally an extra $30,000 of a cost to 50, depending what's there. And the requirements of its full audited statements are not needed. So as the mayor said, they're not, that's just a standard catch-all that they didn't check every single, I guess, how it's put there by Schultz and Associates. So that's why we have it done by local accountants as well here.
Well, you can see where it would concern me because I've dealt with these people for 20 years. Also, you said we will have second on this?
Yes, you'd be behind Pinnacle Bank.
Okay.
Yep.
The last time, wasn't this agreement pretty much the same as we had last time?
Yes, the agreements, this agreement that we've submitted to Mitchell for this review is essentially identical to the last one. I think we've changed the dollar amount and lengthened it to one year.
Rather than six months to one year, yes.
I think that's about the only changes.
Okay. Under this agreement, under Part 5, Negative Covenants to Borrower, 5.01, encumber the pledge as sets. The borrower will neither create nor suffer to exist any new mortgage, pledge, lien, charge, or encumbrance, including liens arising from judgments on the property provided as security for this loan, which is superior to the claims and of lenders. The last time, we were moved from second to third when Nebraska Enterprise Fund had money borrowed toward and was moved up ahead of us, which moved us from second to third.
That was a money purchase interest?
Was that something dealing with Mr., my client?
Yeah, with the NEF, what happened is...
Apparently, it was.
It was done with this initial run, but we've actually bought them out to make sure that this is a clean deal on that side. And it was only moved ahead, Mr. Kerr, on the actual parts that their money was used towards. The rest of the balance was always still being in second position. And because of that, as soon as that came to our attention with myself and with Pinnacle Bank, it was removed and paid out, and the city was back into the second position.
Do you understand there's a difference between a blanket lien and a purchase money security interest? The purchase money security interest covers only the items purchased with those funds. So a lender could have a blanket on everything and be in first lien position, but if the second lender comes in and gives a purchase money security interest for a new turning or drill press, then that money lent for the purchase of that drill press would be secured by first lien position in it. So there is a difference between a blanket lien and a purchase money security interest. And then back to the compilation, I would assume, in dealing with finances of various clients, rarely, for just internal purposes, are they audited. You know, it's something that can be done on occasion, but as Mr. Mitchell said, the costs are significant when you go to an audited statement. So I guess I would ask the council, if that's something you require of other applicants, then that's something we can look at. But if you're, I would just ask to treat Mr. Mitchell the same as you would any other similarly situated person in supplying for funds.
Rich?
On this topic of the compilation report, if I understood both sides correctly, it's not whether they're audited or compiled statement. It's the paragraph in the compiled statement, and I believe Mayor Worthy had indicated that, you believe that that might be boiler or templated language that would accompany any report Schultz and Associates sent out.
That's correct.
Not wording that would be specific to Dempsters LLC. Did I understand everybody correctly on that? Okay. Thank you.
And this was in there last time?
Yeah.
This language in there, I'd have to go back and look. I don't know off the top of my head.
I don't recall it was.
I don't believe last time we had statements from Schultz on the last one, at least that were very long in time because Dempsters LLC hadn't been here very long either.
You did.
Yeah, I don't remember if that paragraph was in there or not.
I don't recall.
And I can, no, I'm not under oath here, but there was nothing that's brought to our attention for them to put that in there.
I'd venture a guess, it's probably because the accountants don't want someone relying on this as if it were an audited statement and send it for liability reasons. The gentleman. Person looking at this has a clear understanding that these are not audited statements. Again, they're probably better than what you'd find in most businesses that prepare their own documents, and that he did have a certified public accounting firm prepare the documents for financial purposes only.
And locally for that reason as well. So it is someone, as you said, Mr. Kerr, that you've dealt with for, I don't remember the year, so I don't misquote to get in trouble, but that's why we did that as well. So it's not done out of somewhere else, some other state. It's done here locally.
And have we had an independent audit of the equipment? I'm thinking it's, I can't find it here right now, but...
Actually, I can comment to that. Ms. Andrea Schaefer of Pinnacle Bank actually did after the NEF, and we actually implemented a full serialized system so that all of the actual whole goods and parts are serialized so you'll know exactly what you own, when you own, and where they are at all times as well. So that's something we did ahead, in advance of the request for it to be done. So you do know exactly what you own, where it's owned, where it's tracked by serialized goods as well. So that's clear. And I just want to go back again. It's Pinnacle in first place is blanket, you as blank as a second. You always did have a second blanket statement and coverage of all assets.
Would you like to come down and look?
Have.
Would you like to come again?
Yeah, we could probably work that out.
You always can. You can just go on in. Always open.
I'll schedule a time, I'm sure we can.
Dwight?
I've got a question for Grant. Since we don't have minutes of your meeting and stuff, you guys took, could you tell me what kind of discussion you had, and maybe the negative side, and what was the vote on the final outcome for this?
The discussions related to the application, I'll start with the positives first, which were the last loan application was paid off on time in the amount that was requested. Their margins on the products that they sell are good, north of, I'll keep that to myself. So their cost of goods sold compared to their sales is a healthy number. Their sales are doubled from last year to this year, even though we're halfway through the year, so we can only presume that that will continue. So those are things tracking in the positive in terms of the financials we reviewed. Some of the concerns would be cash on hand, equity in the company, which kind of ties into how Mr. Mitchell has used previous personal loans, but it still shows as an equity in the negative on the financial statements and that the net income is in the red. But the net income being in the red could be attributed to a business that's where their business is at as well. So some of the positives that we're tracking in terms of their sales and their growth are good, and their last loan being paid on time and as it was submitted is also in the positive. Did I get everything?
Vote.
Vote was two to one in favor.
Back to the equity point, which we did have discussion on, is the reason why is for the purchase price is still in there as equity position, but that would be way behind as me being the owner, as a personal guarantee and general security. So that's why that's in there. Where the equity could be seen as being a bit skewed is because I still have the purchase price that's in there that's got to be paid back to me. So that's why. That's what affects a bit of it. But still, the assets are north of $850,000 of workable assets, plus with this run, we'll be adding another 400,000, 450,000, depending what options they do. On top of that, it'd be 1.2 and change million dollars worth of assets for Pinnacle's position, which is about 140, 150,000, you guys being in second. Plus, you've got $400,000 of assets of my other companies outside in the US, plus our house we've collateralized, and I don't, I think that's a very key thing of me pledging our house, plus our Canadian assets as well. So we're all in, for sure. One of the other questions that Mr. Counselor Fairbanks mentioned last time is, we've also put in an excess of $1.4 million ourselves, and no money's been taken out. So we're heavily invested in this, in the city and in this project, for sure, and continue to be. So I hope you...
Mr. Clayball?
You are adding technology then to the spreaders, then? How was, then you went out to Husker Harvest Days, and you've gone to State Fair. How's your response been?
It's been great. It's just absolutely fantastic. Also, we launched our variable rate spreader, so we've got the longest-lasting spreader with the most sold in the whole industry, and now we've got the most technologically advanced spreader that we did on our own dime with our own engineering and resources. So it was a huge hit with Husker Harvest, and yeah, we're pretty excited about the fall of what we're doing, for sure. Thank you.
How much does that add to the cost, then, with adding the...
It's an add-on, so it doesn't add to the cost. It's an options. A lot of the farmers we're finding, the newer, younger farmers are wanting the variable rate, so it normally saves them between $3,000 to $5,000 a year, depending on their spread pattern, so it could pay itself off in as quick as five years. And some of the more traditional farmers are still preferring just the old PTO drive, and especially a lot of the co-ops, too. A lot of people don't want to switch their hydraulic fluid, so they just stick with the PTO, but the market dictates. So luckily, it's still the same frame, and that's where we spent a lot of engineering design to have it augmented so it can just be added on without changing a lot of our costs. So we've got the same sturdied 50-year reliable frame, which over 9,000 spurs has been sold on, and now it's the most technologically advanced as well. So we're pretty excited about that.
Mr. Partey?
I've got one more question for you. Do you see in the near future where you won't be coming back to these kind of loans? The reason I'm asking is because if you see the next couple of items we're listing, we're writing off some serious money.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, that was asked at the council, too. My hope is to not. This is a lengthy process, and I know it's still a tough political process for all of you as well. So our hope is not. It might be one more time, hopefully, for less as well, as we're improving. We have turned the corner. We're very fortunate to have done that. So I was asked by the council, you know, are you going to come back? And our hope is always to not. But I will say this, being an international investor, I think it is kind of crucial and key at the initial stages for these things, and it makes a difference, for sure. So I think that's a pretty key place. For the security side, I'll go back to, not to rehash it, but with personal guarantees, with full collateral, with being in second position, and with us also having other pledged US assets as well, that's where we're making sure we're all in, so we've covered, hopefully, as much risk as we can.
Mr. Kerr?
The house you were speaking of, that's here in the United States?
That's in Canada, sir. Both houses.
If this was default, Toby or Butch, can we go across international lines to go after his assets? I hate to bring that up, but I'm just, I'm trying to cover every...
I'm not specifically familiar with all of the security interest requirements for going international for seeking out those kind of assets. We may have to, if we got to that point, heaven forbid, that we may have to seek specific counsel to assist us in that, probably. It's just the level of expertise that I don't think me or Tobias has enough in. But also, I don't believe that's a substantial amount of what he's contributing as security here.
You're talking about $225,000 behind the city of $1.4 million up to $3 million worth of assets, plus also $400,000 worth of pledged assets in the US. So you've got $1.6 million of collateral assets, a general security agreement over all my assets, all of our companies, and mutual funds. So you do an action here, you do an action in Canada, and you seize the assets. It could take up to a year or two, but when you've got a personal guarantee from the owner, it supersedes, it's, Canada is part of NAFTA, North America Free Trade Agreement, so let alone as a business owner and entrepreneur, this would be massively publicized, so it would, you've got a lot of collateral. So, but it's a good question, Mr. Kerr.
Well, I just, I hate, I don't want you to think I'm being a bad guy here, but as Dwight brought up, the next two times, we've got some problems and...
And I don't want to, but I don't know how many of them personally guaranteed, plus pledged other assets, plus a general security agreement, plus putting in over $400,000, which is what we've done.
I think we've covered that.
And it's an international agreement, or not an agreement, but international trade. And, you know, just because we're here in Nebraska and Beatrice, I think we need to keep our eyes open as a citizen, too. I'm also a citizen in Beatrice, and we have a global economy today. What we do today in agriculture and manufacturing, it doesn't matter if you're selling manure spreaders or your meat cutter, it's going to, what happens globally and internationally affects our markets here in Beatrice at home. It's something that, Rich, those are good questions, but I think the more and more that we, as a community, embrace international trade, I think the better off we'll be, and so I'd ask...
Are you doing these 30 runs the same way you did the last time on consignment? Or do you have somebody who's...
On consignment, again, that's on there, yeah. With track serialized, yes, sir, we are. And we've got about 100 pending orders. A lot of the co-ops, they want them built, and they want them right away. So we're leaving them without tires or the final options, so they want variable rate, if they want them to be, different type of tires or different type of drives, we've got that. So it's, but they're all serialized, and it is on consignment. Yes, sir.
Mr. Cook?
Thank you. I'm sure you told me, and I just having trouble hearing over on this side of the table for some reason, but the loan from shareholders, is it you for 1 million?
That's correct. So that's the purchase price of what we did, yes.
That's what I thought you said. So really, you start looking at his current liabilities, it's about 10% of his total liabilities. That's not really too bad, 10%.
If you take that out of the mix.
Yeah.
And that'd be way behind everyone else, yes, that's correct, yeah.
Right. So, you know, 10% is pretty good on the current liabilities compared to what he has, so...
Does anyone from the audience have any questions? Let's come back to the city council one more time before we move on with this. Anybody else have a question? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. And that is approved, 7-0. Resolution number 5815 has been passed and adopted.
Thank you very much, council and mayor. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next item on the agenda, which is not quite as positive, is resolution number 5816, authorizing the write-off of all bad debts associated with the CDBG loan for the BVA Incorporated.
Mayor, I move that resolution number 5816 be passed and adopted.
Second. Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey. That resolution number 58, I beg your pardon. Bilzbach, resolution number 5816 be passed and adopted. Discussion?
For those of you who remember, this loan made to BVA was in 2009. It was a $300,000 loan. The auditors have kind of come to us and said, you're carrying these on your books. Is there anything that you can do to try to collect money? Again, BVA filed bankruptcy. We don't feel there's any other assets that we can go after at this point. And so based upon their recommendation, and due to the current status of these loans, we're recommending that we write off the remaining portion of this debt. Doesn't mean we give up collecting on it. As you all know, it's an accounting procedure that we do here.
Any discussion?
Just kind of wish we had to have these maybe before the other ones, so the gentleman would set through this, and here are some of the frustrations we have to go through. I don't think you can think about it now. It's just a part of life you're dealing with, that someone comes in with a hot idea and we get burned. I don't think you can think about it now. It's just a part of life you're dealing with, that someone comes in with a hot idea and we get burned.
Any other discussion? Anyone from the audience? Sir, you want to come up and state your name and give your testimony if you want? All right. All right. Any other discussion? All right. Your vote please. That is passed 7-0. Resolution number 58-16 has been approved. Next item is resolution 58-17, authorizing the writing off of all bad debts associated with the CDBG loan for FiveStat and Storkraft.
Mayor, I move that resolution number 58-17 be passed and adopted.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Claybaugh. Resolution number 58-17 be passed and adopted. More of the same?
You have two separate loans here. That's why you have two separate motions coming up. This, this one has to do with the loan that we originally made in 2010. That was with FiveStat that got rolled into Storkraft. It was for $600,000. As you recall, part of it was forgiven based upon job creation, which they met. Part of it was based upon payments, which they did make some payments. The total amount that we have currently being outstanding is $330,000.
For both?
That is for just this one. There could be some additional work done. They made some additional jobs. There was some additional job creation. We have not gone through the mathematics, if you will, to figure out how much additional money should be forgiven based upon job creation, largely because, well, at this point, it is kind of moot as to which way we went. And so we didn't spend the time calculating it.
Any other discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience? And your vote please. That is approved 7-0. Resolution 58-17 has been approved. Next item is resolution 58-18, authorizing the writing off of all bad debts associated with CDBG loan for Storkraft.
Mayor, I move that resolution number 58-18 be passed and adopted.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey. That 58-18 be passed and adopted. And further discussion?
This loan's associated with the loan that the City Council made in 2014 to Storkraft for $250,000. No part of that loan was repaid as repayment dates didn't come until after they had closed and filed for bankruptcy. So no payments were made.
I think part of the discussion we had on this one here, we thought we might lose it, but it's a storied name from the history of Beatrice, same as the other one. Is this name totally gone now then? Will it ever exist again, Storkraft?
I can't say it'll never exist again, but it's currently in its current form. I don't see it existing again, no.
Any other comments, questions? Anyone from the audience? And your vote please. That is approved 7-0. Resolution number 58-18 has been approved. Next item is resolution number, thanks, Grant. Next item is resolution number 58-19, authorizing the application for grant assistance from the Royals Charity for the purchase and installation of fencing at two new youth ballfields at Hannibal Park.
Mayor, I move that resolution number 58-19 be passed and adopted.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Claybaugh. Resolution number 58-19 be passed and adopted. Discussion?
As you recall, in the budget this year, we have in there funding to install two new baseball or softball fields out at Hannibal Park. When that information became public, somebody in the public, and I apologize because I don't remember their name, contacted our meter reader as he was out and about making his rounds and gave them some information about some possible grants, one of which was the Royals Charity Foundation that you see here. We have reviewed that, and Greg has put together the application to apply for funding through the Royals Charity to help offset some of the cost of those new fields.
Questions? Something a little more positive?
Nice guy.
Was very nice.
Anyone from the audience? Mr. Partey?
Not a big deal. When I was looking through this, you see all these 110 or 20 people and stuff. I don't see any men or adult groups listed on here.
The fields that we're building will not be sized for adults to play on. They're going to be smaller fields, much like if you're familiar with Hannibal Park, the two fields that are currently to the north, five and, four and five, they're smaller fields. Usually the adults play down on fields one, two, or three.
One of the other things is the specifics of this grant is to increase awareness and participation in youth baseball and softball. So they want to ensure that the fields that are being created are dedicated solely to the youth. So that was one of the requirements. So that's why we noted the usage of, of the younger kids.
We get Gordon and Chamberlain to come down then?
There's a highlight of who we might be able to get them in in the off-season maybe. We'll see.
Any other discussion? Anyone from the audience? Now write your vote please. That's approved 7-0. 58-19 has been approved. Next item is resolution 58-20, entering into a roadway agreement with Flowing Springs Development LLC.
Mayor, I move that resolution number 58-20 be passed and adopted.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey. That resolution number 58-20 be passed and adopted.
Louis has brought in, Louis Goosen has brought in a plat to plat some additional ground to the west of the Covered Bridge there. 25th Street goes into Covered Bridge Heights. As it turns the corner there, becomes Covered Bridge Road through the Covered Bridge. Part of our issues that we were working through was access to those additional lots that he was looking to plat. As you're aware, there's the Covered Bridge there. There were some questions, concern about whether or not our emergency vehicles would be large, would be able to fit through that bridge. Was the bridge able to support them? Because as many of you know, that bridge was designed without an engineer stamp on it. It's never been approved. And so there were some concerns there. When working through that issue with Louis and the Flowing Springs Development, we came up with this agreement. This agreement, the city does not take over the roads. The agreement states that the city does not take over the bridge. What it states is the city has the ability to go out once a year to go out and inspect the bridge. If we notice anything is deficient, to bring it to Flowing Spring Development's attention, and they have to make the repair. If they don't make the repair, we can make the repair at their cost. In addition, when they plat the new parcel of ground to the west of the bridge, they have to plat Covered Bridge Road going all the way over to 19th Street. They don't have to install it. They just have to plat it. In the event that they don't do the improvements to the bridge, the other option is that we can come in and put the road in over to 19th Street, giving our emergency vehicles access via 19th Street and coming in then from the west.
And the road would be at their expense?
The road would be at their expense. Those are the two ways that we've kind of assured that our emergency vehicles could get to their new development. At the same time, again, we're not taking over the roads. We're not taking over the bridge. Those would all be items addressed at a later date in time.
And as I understand, the ladder truck has gone.
Ladder truck has gone.
Through the bridge?
Yes, that's correct. Ladder truck has gone through.
Or under the bridge.
We tried emergency vehicles and we've made sure that they, they weren't able to fit through the bridge.
Questions? Dwight?
Question all the time. But it says in here that if they will not repair the bridge or something that goes out, that we will do it and then go after them?
Correct.
Will this be an easy thing to do?
It depends what the repairs are. I mean, it would depend on how easy it is to repair the bridge. As far as, I mean, Flowing Springs Development has significant assets at this point. I mean, they own all the ground there. They own probably 60 acres at least.
At least.
I would just hate to see it turn into the Paddington or the Kensington sign where it started out as a $15,000 project and end up at 80, and this bridge may be replaced with the original specs and stuff that we wouldn't want to do if we had to.
If you had to, the other option, like you said, is to just build the gravel road in from the west and just do it that way.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public? Yeah, I'll need to have you come up. Thank you. Just give us your name and address, please.
My name's Jerome Mall, M-A-L-L, 2101 Grant.
You get that? First name is Jerome?
Jerome, Jerry. Jerry's fine. M-A-L-L, 2101 Grant.
Thanks, Jerry.
If we say that the bridge will not be repairable, and then we would have to do something with 19th Street, who would be responsible for 19th Street then?
Well, when we say 19th Street, it would be 19th Street going east.
I'm talking about the, the one that's going north and south. That'd be 19th?
Correct.
It is, but then his entry would be from 19th Street east.
What will happen with 19th Street? Will we have to do anything? Is that going to have to be upgraded?
That's, I mean, that's a possibility as that development built out. But in the event that we had to, to use that way, we could use it as a gravel road at this time.
For emergency access?
For emergency access, we could. As he developed out, is it a possibility it gets paved? It certainly is.
Then who's responsible for the pavement?
The last time that was done, we did a paving assessment, and the property owners that were adjacent to the property paid for that improvement. That's an option. It's an option that the city just pays to put it in. It's an option the developer just pays to put it in. I mean, all of those are still on the table, and that bridge has not been crossed yet.
Right. Okay. Well, I guess that's my question is who would be responsible for 19th at this point? It's kind of open.
It's still open.
Right. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jerry. Any other comments? All right, your vote please. That is approved 7-0. Resolution number 58-20 has been passed and adopted. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance supplementing the fiscal year 2015 budget statement.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given number 15-016. The title therefore be approved. The rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook. That ordinance number 15-016. And the rules be suspended and the ordinance be read by the title only three times tonight. Your vote please. And that is approved 7-0. Ordinance number 15-016 by number the first time. Ordinance number 15-016 by number the second time. And ordinance number 15-016 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that ordinance number 15-016 be passed and appro.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey. That ordinance number 15-016 be passed and approved. Discussion?
This is, as we had the public hearing earlier, talked about why we're supplementing the budget. This ordinance takes care of that action, so.
Any other discussion from the audience? Your vote please. That is approved 7-0. Ordinance number 15-016 has been approved. Next item on the agenda is a public forum. The public, the purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the City Council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the City Council at this time. Does the council have anything for the public forum? Audience? All right. Next item on the agenda is the City Administrator's monthly report.
A couple of highlights I wanted to point out. First is that the former manufactured gas plant, the activities on that have been increasing lately. There's been a lot of activity with the city recently joining the VCP, the voluntary program that we started. We did meet with NDEQ the other day, and there was a lot of technical talk back and forth amongst engineers and scientists as to what was testing, what needs to be tested. I think the conclusion is there are some data gaps, and they're going to work to fill those before they start any actual removal of any product yet. So I think you'll see probably at least another year before anything's done there as that project moves forward. On page 63 for the fire department, I wanted to note that last month was a very busy month for the fire department. Their calls, they were actually a 14% increase from the same month last year. And if you'll notice, a lot of those occurred at the same time. So there was times last month that we had multiple calls going on at one time. I think the max we reached, I know Chief's gone for tonight, but I think the maximum we had was about four or five calls occurring at the same time. And so those guys kept busy last month. You'll see quite an increase in their call volume. And the final thing I just wanted to point out was the AMI. I know it says on page 67 that about 220 endpoints have been installed. But at the BPW meeting, Pat Feis gave an update, roughly about 500 endpoints have been installed. It's going faster than he anticipated, so that system's being installed and going well.
I think he indicated he could put in right at 75 a day, which is pretty good.
Between two guys are out working it. One guy installs it, the other guy does all the paperwork. They've been able to do about 75 a day, so.
How long before that's complete?
Probably going to be another whole calendar year. This fiscal year, we're closing out this first set of meters. Next fiscal year, you receive another batch in, which he's anticipating occurring the first couple of months. And then the final set comes in FY '17, which will probably be about a calendar year. Other than that, happy to ask any questions you might have as you look through them.
Any questions of Tobias? All right. With that, thanks, Tobias. Thanks for everybody coming tonight. We are going to go into executive session. Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I move that the Beatrice City Council go into closed session at 7:45 p.m. for the protection of public interest to discuss real estate.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey. That we go into executive session at 7:45 p.m. And your vote please. That has been approved 7-0. Thank you, everyone, for coming.